And October school board meeting minutes, approval of October vouchers and vouchers payable, approval of the new staff hire, approval of communications and PR coordinator, approval of plow truck and approval of the thirteen fourteen district goals. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull C, D, and E.
C, D, and E, okay.
Or any of those things. See everything.
Yes, sir?
J and K.
J and K? Plow truck and the next one. All right. Starting off the ballot order, uh, C, D, I believe.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we can go to item C.
Okay. Approval of early graduation requests. If we have students with work in progress that are AP class or that have worked in the media, being taught, kind of being, it's possible that they're going to be AP class or even.
Yeah. Being approval of youth options request. Eileen, you ask a question?
an upper level Spanish, the intro to literacy analysis of Spanish at Marquette. I'm working on that youth option that obviously we brought them as highest level as we can in this department, thus that's why they're seeking to, to go to the next level.
Correct. Any other comments or questions on that?
The motion was due today. You thought the request that this is not incorrect, but this is one where we really don't, it's just presented to us tomorrow.
I was curious, how many students do we have in these, in these? I mean, I think it's great that we have to share, share classes, and I guess at some point, no, I don't think it would be, I don't think it would, you know, I am a general consensus.
Second? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, item four J, approval, oh, I'm sorry, aye, I'm taking in all that back over here. Approval of communications PR coordinator, four I, who's that?
That was me.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I think this position is a luxury. Um, when I look at one of the, uh, proposed, uh, jobs with. I also thought there were some questions out there, the personnel committee, do they have a, uh, if they do have a person, who, I, who part time? I believe them. Do you have a question?
We did get some of that.
I think we were, I think we were actually going to hopefully present a more expanded, not beyond just the three districts. I think there was some talk that we were going to get something based on a much broader range in the three districts around us.
And I, and I, I agree with that. That's what I got to say.
Okay. Any other comments or questions regarding the setup? Good discussion?
Well, I, I still, I still have concerns, and, you know, bear with me for a moment. But when my daughter started in the district eight, nine years ago, I would have never thought we would have gotten to the point that this would be in front of a board to consider a PR position for the district. It just never occurred to me that that was going to be a necessary function. And there are things that, that could use PR handling. In fact, Matt Kershman brought one up at the finance committee meeting, that with the interest in the field that we have, being able to have someone have regular contact with some of the larger groups that are asking to come in and help build those relationships in the district, that that would, that would also be an appropriate function. I've also always said that we do need to promote our district, we do need to bring up our strengths, and we need to, to be more active and vocal in what we do and what we do well. My concern at this point is where it is a new position for the district, that a half-time person as opposed to full-time might be a little bit more appropriate, and we go into this a little bit gradually with a little bit more thought. And if, if it does get approved tonight, then I would also urge that we are very careful in the accountability for this person, in that we continue to constantly reevaluate how it works for the district, what is being done and what could be changed.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Um, the only thing I'll say, it was vetted through the personnel committee, and it was vetted through the finance facilities committee meeting, and the last finance facilities meeting we had, um, we had the luxury of having Ms. Sabrowski there, who was the chairman of the personnel committee, and it was vetted to their, to what they were asking for, and I asked a specific question, is, is everything you were asking for, was that included in, prior to coming to the finance committee? Finance committee was, um, responsible for determining whether we had the financial liability to be able to do this position. And we walked out of that with the answer of being yes. Now, going forward, you're, you're right, Stephanie, um, this position, if it does get approved tonight, will always need, just like every position we do in our district, needs to have a constant and continuous review. Um, this position has been talked about and bandied around since my inception on this board, so I think we're at a point now, because one of the things I have brought up is the district goals, and one of the top things we have is communication. Um, there's nobody more important and more suited to fill that role and help the communication process as the PR director or PR coordinator. So the communication piece of the district goals would be duly served by having this person available. So with that, I'll make approval to approve of communication PR coordinator.
Okay, so I have a second for that.
I'll second it.
Okay. We'll take a roll call vote.
More discussion?
Any more discussion?
Yes. Me.
Oh, right there. Step up.
So, okay, I came on the board in two thousand and eight. At that time, that's when we were just starting all of our strategic planning, and I happened to be on the communication piece of the strategic plan process. At that time, we had, um, put in as one of our goals for the communication piece is to have a communications person. You know, at that time, we had put it in as a half-time position, you know, it never, never went anywhere from there. But, you know, a lot of things have changed since two thousand and eight, there's, uh, everything is now social media and websites and, um, you know, to me, it's just amazing. I mean, I spend more money on cell phone bills and things like that now than I never have before, that, and, you know, and internet and whatever, um, you know, just at our house, and, you know, it, this is the way of the world, and, um, I don't think that we're going to be looking for anything for this person to do. I think there's going to be so much in this person's plight that they're gonna not know what to do first. And, um, and as far as, you know, helping publicize the golf outing, that is one such tiny little piece of this. Um, I think that we're going to be competing for students, how many times do you see schools advertising in the newspaper and sending things to your homes, and, um, we're going to be competing with a lot of students, for a lot of students. We need to get people to know what the Whittanell School District is. I can't tell you how many people that, when I say, oh, I'm on the Whittanell School Board, they'd say, whoa, where's that? I've never heard of that, you know, and it's like, we have so many great things here, we've gotta get that out. And, um, you know, I, I really support this position. In addition, you know, we have a lot of it, or at least a quarter of it already, um, that we're providing services for now that we're contracting services for, so it's not going to make that big of a difference with the, um, with the, in the budget, plus we already have that position on kind of a placeholder for this position.
Thank you. Luanne, go ahead.
There's nothing to that, no. It's, it's, because it's such a change, and I had kind of gone round and round in, you know, my own thinking about whether or not I would support this position. But I, I agree with just what everything everyone said, it is new, we need to really take a look at some of the details we do. Our superintendent needs to take a look at the details around what this job is doing, and I think, you know, while my tendency is to want to jump in there and help with that, it's not our job. The details are going to have to really be left up to our superintendent, and we would hold our superintendent accountable for the results of our staff, like we do all the rest of our staff, our fine, high-quality staff, because they all do a really great job. So, in that sense, um, and also recognizing how changing our role of media is, even our media in terms of the social networking, it's really hard to get through. So I have some expectations around how this position would help. I would suggest that we ask our administration or administrator to create a communications plan if this passes, so that we are monitoring it as we do a facilities plan and our budget and our student achievement plans, you know, that all of that, there should be some alignment around what we're trying to do, because I, I certainly want dollars to go to impact our students. That's what our job is, really, how can we get the biggest bang for our buck? So I see this, the reason that I can make that direct connection is because we need the public involved, we need more people involved, we just got done listening back there, and communication is still coming. And it'll help us in, in improve our schools, that's the reason I can support it.
Thank you.
I'll give my two cents to him. I'm having a hard time with this, and I am a marketing, you know, I have a marketing background, and, you know, I, but I'm still having a hard time because it's hard to attract the dollars right back, and how it's going to help the students. Um, I don't know, I mean, is it, we are outsourcing part of it? Could some other responsibilities be outsourced and be less expensive where you're not having salary and, and benefits package?
Other comments or discussion? All right, then I'm going to weigh in. Um, there's one thing I've learned in forty-three years, you cannot measure marketing, the success of marketing dollars, it's, it's very, very difficult. Um, a particular company I'm associated with just went out and spent about three million dollars on a campaign on about a green chair called The Good Fit. How do you measure the success of a program like that? Very, very difficult. There's many within my organization that say, you know, why are we spending that kind of money? So, it deals with brand, it deals with brand identification, um, and quite frankly, this school district does not have brand identification. Um, and we need to put a stake in the ground somewhere. I think we've started that in forward-thinking, and, uh, thank you, Luanne Byrd, for taking such a lead on that. We cannot expect a board member to continue in that kind of a role. We need someone dedicated to now take forward-thinking to whatever that ne- next level is, level is, implementation, whatever. We don't have that. So, um, it's been vetted at personnel, it's been vetted at finance, um, it's been supported by those two groups, so, personally, I'm in favor of the position. So, any other further discussion? If not, we'll take it to vote.
I would like to say, we talk about the finance of it, there was about eleven, shy, just shy of eleven thousand dollars that was being spent, uh, for marketing. A num, a wa, a wage was thrown out there, and you're right, there was a quarter of that. But there's also more involved when you look at benefits, you look at what this person is going to be spending, you talk about reaching, uh, new people, and, and, and I get those things in the mail too, those glossy cards from MPS and, and private schools, well, they're not free. So, we have to look at that cost too, and I don't think we have. I, as a small business owner, I do advertise. And I, I can't afford your level, Bernie, and I, and I need to, when I use my advertising dollars, I need to get a response from it. I can't just, um, put, put money out there to get my name out there without getting a return. So I, I've gone through things that have worked and that I have worked. Um, you know, I think a person like this would help that, should, should have that knowledge, like do what may work and not, not throw money out unnecessarily. But again, I go back to being in the luxury, and there's more costs associated, let's not just say it's a quarter, it's, it's a lot more than just a quarter, quarter just of the, of the proposed wage, benefits included then on top of that, and all this, uh, marketing, advertising they, you plan to do it, so there are a lot more costs associated with it.
Motion's on. Okay. All right, so, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, so, motion for four three. Next item is item four J, approval of the plow truck. Where it ends?
Um, Dr. Holt, in the finance committee, we had discussed the plow truck, and it was more of a general topic. Um, my question before I approve, or, right now, without any more further documentation, do we have any other documentation? Has there been anything else discussed that you're aware of regarding the plow truck?
That's, that's the finance committee. So, the recommendation, the recommendation that was there was to go out and redefine your, redefine your scope, come back to us with a, am I right, a different?
I, I got a different opinion on that.
Yeah, I don't think that, it was floated out there, but it wasn't said that you need to go do that.
It was if you couldn't find the Chevy, then look for a Ford, but I was never going to come back to the Ford.
He was pretty, pretty hard set because we've had such good luck with this particular Flexitron or whatever it was, this particular item.
Duramax.
Duramax, yeah.
Like, that's a good name for a new truck.
I was just thinking to say, hey. I don't want trucks, nobody has a Flexitron.
Duramax. So, I, I agree with that, I don't think we have to do that because we, you know, it's a particular model.
Okay, then let me, then let me interject here and ask, because the discussion that I had, if I recollect correctly, was the fact that we said it tied, the question really came up because it tied to a policy, because it was in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Does he or do, does administration require board approval even though it was in the budget? Correct?
Right, because of the dollar amount, because of the dollar amount it was, right?
Because, well, both the dollar amount and we've already approved the budget that it was in. Do we need to go? And then I think we deferred that back to the policy committee, correct?
I think after we looked at the policy, we said that, yes, the board needs to approve this one, but send it back to the policy committee so that this doesn't have to happen all the time.
Yeah, and the policy committee, um, sent that, Kathy, to have that on their next agenda.
Okay, well, personally, I, I'm, I'm not going to put a motion forward to approve a plow truck, okay? Because I believe just having one response to an RFP is not enough for me. If somebody else wants to make a motion and it passes, I'll support the decision forward, but I won't, I won't put the motion forward and I will not vote for the approval of the plow truck at this point, because we only have one return.
I'm going to make a decision. Second?
Okay, so, all right, further discussion? You know, there was something, why is time of the, this memorandum that's, why is it this, uh, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
This was a memorandum to the finance committee, it was not in the board packet.
Well, it was in the board packet today. Yeah, it's in the board packet.
I didn't see it.
Yes, I printed this off.
Okay.
So, it is in the board packet.
Well, the only, to, to kind of comment to that, I think too, it says, it, the dealer still needs to actually find the truck, so I'm thinking that.
I think, you know, we feel a moral obligation to, because in everything we've done supporting the district, however, you know, we also have, as good stewards of our taxpayer's money, an obligation to find the best deal, so, um, I don't think we should rush to, you know, a decision based on one RFP.
But he did put it out to, I believe, five dealers, and I know that.
Yes.
His answer to your question, to that question that you had, was, this is a, one person. He's going by strictly his good fortune with this unit, the nineteen eighty-nine model that we had, that's, um, still going to garner the district some, uh, some money with a trade-in or as a outright sale. So he's going strictly on, on performance.
Many municipal schools will use in their RFP process, I have heard of that. They will deliver a set of parameters so narrow that it automatically eliminates everybody else and you're relegated to an individual. I also brought up the fact, why don't you look at it as a lease option? Did we not discuss that?
Well, we also talked about the fact that why don't we, why don't we, for, for, the other?
Again, you don't really have a point of reference at all here for any kind of comparable or semi-comparable bond.
And Bernie, to your point about, and you, the longer you guys are on this board, you will see that RFPs can be written to be whatever you want them to be, and to my, to my point as a steward of the, of the taxpayer dollars, here's a prime example, if you narrow your RFP so narrow, you all get one response.
But, the other Chevy dealers should be able to get one. If this one Chevy dealer can get it, maybe the other ones were, were lazy and didn't go and seek it out.
Personally, we don't know if they get it, that, that, because what was presented was not the fact that they've got it.
No.
That they will, they will be willing to go look for it.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't know if they got it. So, we don't even know if they got it, but that's my-
Just a, I'm still trying to understand how things get done around here, but if he followed the policies, he followed what we've written down, given the administration direction on all of the existing issues. If there's a variation from the director, we could, that, that, probably, if he did, he should-
For those people who got it.
In terms of what kind of truck, I think that's going to be a similar going on our part if we start to direct them. So, I would prefer that we stay at a higher level on this discussion and let him pick the truck he wants and follow the process.
Right.
Is there a rule for a friendly amendment here, that's up to the effect that said a cost not to exceed? I don't think we need to motion forward.
Here's the other thing, in a second.
Thank you.
The approval of a plow truck. He's got a budget, within the budget, can we just say that?
Are you looking for the dollar amount? He had forty-six thousand eight dollars and twenty-one cents.
Sure, I'll be glad to make the amendment, you know, I will make a friendly amendment that I, I make a motion to approve and support the purchase of a plow truck not to exceed with comparable equipment as designated in his attached memorandum and purchase proposal at a cost not to exceed forty-six thousand eight dollars and twenty-one cents. Any other discussion? If it's not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, point of order.
I don't think you can second it, I think I second it because I second it as a original motion.
I don't think so.
I have to, it was a friendly amendment, I think it's, okay.
Which is fine, I mean, I can do that, but-
Then my question is, do we vote on a friendly amendment first, then the motion?
No, I think she just, I think whoever's second has to approve, allow it.
Right, and then I think you just vote on it all, right. And then you just vote on the whole thing, the motion with the amendments, right? And I second it, yes.
Let's go to both.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Name?
One name.
Your name, we've got six one.
Okay.
Next item is approval of district goals, item four K, I think, well, I think you did.
I did, I did, I brought this off the agenda, because it's one of the, we had this, this came out of a district workshop, and the only reason I brought it out was, ties into what I've always said, the thirty thousand foot level. In relation to the plow truck as an example, I will vet it through the, I have to, these goals are too specific, and they're geared towards too much, I would consider a superintendent goal through his staff, I believe we need to stay at the thirty thousand foot level. All being that, I mean, everybody put a lot of effort and work into these goals, I just think they're too specific for what we need to be at.
Thank you.
Were there any, did you change any of these from the input that?
Yeah.
So, in goal number two, two B, design and action plan for presentation, now, is it going to get implemented, or is that something that the board thinking about?
That's, it's actually, I kind of like, who has suggested, really, about something, I don't know, I don't know, create a communications plan, and that's what I was talking about with B, well, I'm sorry, no, B is the action plan for presentation, and so you guys will actually look at it in your hands, that's that goal. C would probably, B could either add communication in here, or I can-
My question is-
Based on this year, we will probably only get as far as being able to present to the board the plan, right, I mean, you know, and so the implement, you know, because of the timing of things, implementation would really go into the next, into the next year's goals, correct, Quinn?
You're going to plan with timeframes attached to it.
But do we see anything from Forward Thinking being able to be implemented into this year's goals, I think is what he's asking.
Possibly, I wouldn't, I'm being open to what the community's priorities are, so, I don't, we're not going to change these goals if that's what you're getting at, but there could be definitely some impact from the community, and the community should have a chance to implement its priorities through us, through these goals.
So, Forward Thinking comes up with this action plan, and then all of them are going to go to each municipality or each school board within that municipality and present the plan.
Right, we'll bring a plan, we'll bring broad priorities to you, and then it'll be up to us to integrate those priorities into the work we're already doing. So, it'll give us a chance really to do goal setting much earlier for next year, it'll change the process, Quinn, and some of that I'm really unclear about exactly the details, but we know it will.
Thank you.
I also had thought with, on, kind of, on TJ's concerns, I think, if you're referring to goal number one with the specifics, as far as student achievement, I'm comfortable with that because we didn't set those parameters, administration came with, to us, with what they thought would be realistic goals to increase students, we did not drive what that number would be.
I won't argue with you at all, I'm just, my whole point is, our goal should be to increase in academic rigor, and then the goals and process by which those are done, are done at levels well below our level, so, it starts with the superintendent and then in turn, using just C, it's a sixth to eighth grade, that's a middle school, you would hold a middle school principal and their staff accountable for these, ours would be to increase the academic rigor, I'm just saying there to, even though administration presented it to us, doesn't necessarily we have to agree that it should be a district goal that we want to see that specific, we want to see academic rigor and career readiness achieved, that's our goal. These are steps to secure that those goals will be met, those are measurements by which we're going to do, as opposed to this being the actual goal, because that may or may not be achieved. That's all, that's all I'm saying, is I totally agree with everything on here, it's just the fact that it's too detailed for our level of thirty thousand foot, that's all I was driving at.
Can I take on to that? I mean, really, what all of my colleagues come up with here are really good things, and TJ, maybe when you talk about that, that makes me rethink too, because it's easier for me to see in a truck, what the thirty thousand foot level is and not, it is a little bit harder when it comes to our kids, what is our responsibility and what is it ours? If we knew, we were at the regional meeting and the three of us were having conversation, or at the table with our colleagues in other districts about what we want for our kids when they leave the system, that's thirty thousand, and having more of a conversation about are the students ready when they leave here, that would be thirty thousand foot, and maybe in the future TJ, we can get there, to focusing on more that bigger picture of the graduates, because you're right, and I will support these goals, because they're good goals too, but there still is another level of thirty thousand that we could be looking at as a board in terms of the outcomes when our kids leave the system. We're not there yet, and I hope we move in that direction in the future, monitoring those, the impact when our kids leave the system. So, we have a lot of conversations around that, are they career ready, what does career readiness look like, how is, and we've had some discussions with our administrative staff, how is that discussion changing in the world, and what are people expecting of our kids and our system, I think that's all good stuff TJ, and it's not in here yet, but maybe in the future.
Other comments? Since we just voted on a new PR coordinator, and when I think about communication, I'd probably add an item C, something that would sound like this, develop a district-wide communication plan, conjunction with a PR coordinator, that encompasses the action plans developed by the Forward Thinking team.
Could you go community-wide, not just district-wide?
District encompasses the community, but we can certainly, district, community, stakeholder, wherever you want to-
That'd be great, I'd support that.
District encompasses the community, but if you want to say district and community, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe both.
I don't have a particular issue with that.
Okay.
Because the way B is written right now, it's based on feedback received from Forward Thinking, design action plan for presentation to the school board, well, that's just a microcosm of the entire community and the district, so.
Bernie, could you read that one more time, and this time I'm ready to talk about it?
Develop a district and community-wide communication plan, in conjunction with the PR coordinator position.
Okay.
That encompasses the action plans developed by the Forward Thinking team. Maybe that's, you know, one could argue it's under increased stakeholder engagement, but I'm not sure what that means.
Do we want to make it as narrow as the Forward Think team, or just leave it more broad as far as communication plan? Because I'm going to say that there may be communication aspects that aren't necessarily going to be brought up through Forward Thinking.
And to me, that would fall under this increased stakeholder engagement.
Okay, that's fine.
That's where I would put that, I think it's a point well taken, I think, because right now, I'm not sure, you know, increased stakeholder engagement is a very broad encompassing statement. We don't have any measurements around it, but-
So, we could make a motion that includes that, I'd be glad to do that.
We need a motion to approve these, and then a second, and then I would make the friendly amendment to add that.
Well, technically, I don't think you need to, you can say presented and add that.
As presented with the C.
That's fine.
Okay, so, I make a motion, we approve the twenty thirteen fourteen district goals as presented, which also includes the C under goal number two, as-
As amended under communication.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, so, we have approved six one. Okay, and according to my agenda, we have met all of items four through A K, comments in the school board regarding items for future consideration, anybody have anything?
Well, I'd like to put on the additional information about the Southwest Consortium, the students, the number of students that are engaged in that.
I mean, could we wait until we see the memo, because that might, oh, yeah, we need-
That's true, that's true.
We may not need to have a discussion then.
Definitely, that's true.
Bring that back if the memo isn't bringing that.
Okay.
Well, actually, I'm going to change, and I'll tell you why, because we'll get the memo, and it's also related to Project Lead the Way, and I think it's information that I think as a district and a community, people would be interested with all this talk of, you know, a discussion about college and career readiness.
So, do you want me to add, what's the item for future consideration?
To number of students involved in the different Southwest Consortium programs offered.
Okay.
And a little bit more information about exactly what Project Lead the Way is, and the number of our students that participate in it.
I have one, I'd like us to, we had the discussion at the recent Finance Committee, it's, we've talked in circles around capital expenditures and priorities, the Finance Committee was presented with, I would say what I would call a draft or preliminary plan around the swimming pool, I guess I'd like to have a discussion around where the board sees the physical facilities of this school district in the next three years, and what their priorities are, and where you think, you know, we can maximize the dollars that we have, and what makes the most sense. So, we're faced with some rather large expenditures for improvements and renovations, and I think we need to have a discussion around, is that the highest and best use of stakeholders' points, so, general discussion around that, and I can get everybody's input. And I might suggest that we invite Lisa or somebody from Baird to talk about the financing aspect of that. If you prefer, be that it first at the Finance Committee, fine, but we were presented with a preliminary plan on, that's upwards of two million dollars, and that's real money.
Would we need the current? I think you're looking for a workshop to discuss what the seven of us see as priorities within the district.
A vision, I guess is one I'm looking for.
And I guess, is that appropriate, it's any times appropriate, but is that more geared towards a board workshop versus a board meeting? Because then we can have, then we, the dialogue and the tone changes, if you will, just like we did with the district goals, as to have the conversation level, because the board were kind of restricted if it's not slated, given the words of the workshop, if it goes into a tangency, because certain items may come up, may not come up, and does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, and the reason why I brought it up as a board discussion, is because, you know, we're all burdened with a lot of meetings and committee meetings, and it seems like where we get everybody together is at board meetings, and I don't want anybody not to have the opportunity to voice their opinion and what they think their vision, and it just seems to me, it's done easier at a- And it just seems to me it's done easier at a board session than it is at a, you know, a special meeting or a committee meeting or whatever, so. Um, it, you know, it's going to be the first meeting of the month, it's not the second, we're not making decisions about it. It's a discussion. And it's well within, you know, our purview to do that, and our, so we're not violating any statutes. And, and, you know, notwithstanding your comments, Quinn, about, you know, shouldn't we have a three-year capital plan? I think what we're, what I'm asking is, you know, where do you see the three-year capital? You know, I think it's developing that. And we can have it presented by the administration based on what they see. Quite frankly, what I've seen so far is nothing more than renovation. I haven't seen any out-of-the-box thinking. And I think this board should think about something, I'm not suggesting we're approving, thinking about where you want to, where you want, how you want to see this physical plant in a very changing technology environment for our students in the future.
While I agree with the idea, and I think that would be valuable, when you think about a potential vision for a district and how that's going to be, um, deserved, that takes into account all that more than a reckless projection of the future.
Other comments?
I'm all for the matter of work.
You, you, you support the discussion?
Yep, and you know, and this time we hit the head rather than the head. But we don't know. Very, you know, then you're throwing the, uh, the, outside the box thinking, and that's sort of rough, because there's, there's a list of things that, renovation that need to happen, or should happen to our facilities. That when we're trying to have this vision, how are we going to know exactly what that vision should be without some type of doctrine, etiquette, or, um, somewhere where I just can't do it? We may not know that.
I'm going to be very careful here, because we're not slated for any discussion. You asked for anything to be added to the agenda. Now we're getting into discussion.
Yeah.
So, you got to be careful, because we're not slated, this is my point about a board meeting versus a workshop. So, to have any future conversation, I think you should be very careful. So, you already asked for it to put on the agenda. You're the president, you get to decide. Now, you may want to solicit individual board members outside of this meeting to determine if you want it on the agenda or if you want a workshop. But I'm going to be very careful.
I mean, you, you are allowed, you know, I, I came up with the future agenda. You are allowed to ask any qualifying questions.
Correct.
Around that agenda.
Absolutely.
If, it's helpful, I haven't been through the tour like I think most of you have been through. It would be helpful if we all had the same information, so if that's necessary, you all are up on facilities, then I would be glad to schedule a five-minute meeting. If not, just make sure I have, make sure we all have the same information going into the discussion.
It's a great tour, it's what we're.
Yeah, that is. And you should, and you should.
You all did it, right? I did not, okay. So, put that on the agenda, somebody.
You just, you just called Matt.
I don't think it needs to be on our agenda.
We had, we had to do it because.
When to call Matt?
That's on the agenda.
Was that in the minutes? Okay, I'll do it.
So, all right. I, I mean, I, I appreciate the feedback and, uh, you know, well, the, the venue in which we can bring this up, I'll, you know, talk to Lowell about and Matt and maybe some other folks. You know, understand the spirit in which it was teed up. Um, the village of Hills Corners, I'm, I'm involved in this intimately right now, it's, you know, what do you do with a village or a town, and it's just not unique to Hills Corners, that is basically landlocked and buried little room for development? What do you do to ensure that you attract high-quality tenants? Developers that are willing to invest their capital in one municipality versus another? And there's a strong correlation between that and what we have here in the school district, because you know what? The two are tied hand in hand. And I think Laila will verify that based on her work with forward-thinking. The more you can attract businesses, it'll attract families, you need to also have a supporting, modern, up-to-date school district. And you cannot bifurcate those areas and those etiques, so. Not an easy job, uh, and a lot of ambiguity, because you do have things like Quinn just mentioned. You have things that cause, holy criminy, we, we, we got to take care of them, because this is a safety issue for our students. Absolutely, that should, you know, you know, student safety front and center, you know? So, anyways, as a president, I'm going to excuse myself, I have to go back to work. Okay. Are you serving hot dogs to everybody? Why didn't you bring them here? Anyway.
Yours is easy.
Anyways, thank you for your time on that, I, I appreciate it, and, you know, I'll, I'll discuss it and get an email out to everybody and the, you know, I, what I'm hearing is, you know, what's the right venue? And we'll come up with one, but I think it's a discussion that's worthwhile. But I think it's a discussion where we need all the board input, so. Okay, anybody else have anything else for future consideration you want to bring up?
That's big enough what you brought up.
Sorry. Sorry, okay. Uh, then I need a motion to adjourn.
Board members, you administrators, take a look at what they came up with around the questions. I did want to mention that we're, um, I think the student senate, we're listening tomorrow morning. We also have, Nora and I, the Chamber of Commerce, right here at the Falcon Field, Academy of Facilities, we have Chamber of Commerce hosting conversations. Thank you to Don and the folks that put that together. Um, we have November seventh, a public session at the library at six thirty. Because libraries have been early in weird times, which libraries, because at Hills Corners, some public libraries, I forget, there's so many.